So I'd like to call our meeting here to order here, again Cadillac Planning Commission for March 24th, 2025. If everyone is able, please join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Host.
Here.
Rice.
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes.
Bunce.
Here.
Basher. Bauman. Bent. Van Pelt.
Here.
Putvin.
Here. Thank you. First this evening, approval of our agenda here again for March 24th, 2025. Host, second.
I'll second that.
Rice.
Putvin.
Yes.
Basher. Bauman. Van Pelt.
Here.
Bent. Rice.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Next, approval of the February 24th, 2025 meeting minutes.
I move to approve it.
Bunce.
Again.
Rice or Jean?
Jean.
Jean, sorry.
Bauman. Bent. Bunce.
Here, yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Basher. Putvin.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Thank you, Danielle. We have two public hearings this evening, so before I get into any of that, as folks would come forward, since they have a social crowd, which is great, trying to limit everything to three minutes to give everyone an opportunity for what they have to say, either for or against, doesn't matter, does. So, at this time, we have an application filed by property owner Robert Munger of Alba Ventures requesting property on Pearl Street. I'm not going to read that silly number. Be conditionally rezoned from RM1 to B3. Proposed use of the property to be limited to self-storage. Having read that, Mr. Wallace?
Yes, this site of the rezoning is on the very south edge of the city. It's behind the Lakeside Apartments and immediately east of the Pheasant Ridge Mobile Home Park. It's not been assigned an address yet, and that's why it goes by the parcel number. This is kind of a first, I think, in a long time, if ever there has been one in the city, but it's for a conditional rezoning, which means the owner of the property is able to ask the city for a particular zoning district and voluntarily choose to limit the uses that are within that district. So in this particular case, he's asking to be B3, but he's voluntarily decided that he's willing to accept a limitation of only self-storage on the lot, which means all the other myriad of uses that you could do in a B, in a B3, he would not be able to do on this property. So just so everybody understands that. Some of the unique things about this property, it is at the end of a private street, so most properties that we deal with do have access to a public street, which this one does not. The applicant does have an access easement, so that he does have access by a private street to this parcel. The distance of this parcel from Pearl Street does not make installing new water and sewer lines financially feasible for this property. The lines that run back to serve the current apartments are private, and he cannot access those utility mains to serve his property. He would have to run all new lines all the way back out from Pearl and run them back, the entire length of the property, back to that site. The owner is applying to have the property rezoned. It's currently in a RM1, which is a multiple family residential district, to the B3 general business district. As I mentioned, it's conditional rezoning, and he will be limited to just do self-storage on the site. The applicant has chosen to limit the use in the B3 district to self-storage, and the site would not be able to be used for any of the other uses in the B3 district other than the self-storage. Some of this, I think I've already sort of gone over. This is the narrative, which was provided by the applicant, talking about it being at the end of a private street and having the difficulty of bringing in new water and sewer lines. At the purchase of this property, Clam Lake Township was in discussions to loop the utilities with the applicant to, in giving a public easement. Clam Lake Township abandoned their plans of moving forward, and therefore he is seeking B3 zoning and a voluntary conditional zoning for self-storage units. This use would not require public utilities. It will provide the self-storage needed in the area where there is not any readily available. He is suggesting that his business hours would be from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. I don't think that probably figures into this. If it were approved, it would also require a special use permit, and I think those conditional items could be certainly added on at the time that the special use permit was going to be undertaken. To give some sense of what's happening around the site, there is development immediately north of the site. That's the back end of one of the apartment buildings. That's immediately north of the property. To the west of the site is the Mobile Home Park, and you can see what it looks like in this picture. Those are some of the closest units to the property. Going in the other two directions, the first photo on the left is going towards Mitchell. It's all open. Going to the south is all open and vacant as well, so there's not any immediate development to the east or to the south. Looking at the zoning for the area, you have a variety of zoning districts. You have R2, which tends to be a single-family zoning district, but however, in this case, it was developed into a Mobile Home Park, not a conventional single-family neighborhood. You have to the north, multiple-family zoning in the RM1 and the RM2, and then you have the TS1 district located to the east of the property. The city's master plan identifies the subject property be designated for high-density residential development. This classification is designed to provide for a wide variety of housing possibilities, including single-family, duplex, two-family, multiple-family, manufactured home parks, and residential planned unit developments. It was probably envisioned at one time that maybe the parcel immediately to the north was going to develop this property, and maybe that didn't happen, but at some point in time, it was sold off without the benefit of having public access, but it did have private access, so the property was able to be used. Establishing an optimal zoning district for this site is challenging due to it not having direct access to a public street. Conditional rezoning to the B3 district with the limitation to self-storage is a reasonable zoning designation. Self-storage could be viewed as a supporting use to the apartment and mobile home residents in the area who have relatively small living quarters. We have talked recently to Alpine Village. They're also looking at adding another apartment building or two to their site, which is vacant immediately northwest of this site. Self-storage facilities also have a relatively low daily trip generation. At the applicant's two other storage facilities, the visitation is about five visitors per week, and that's to serve 48 self-storage units. Under this conditional rezoning, if it were approved, the use would also require a special land use permit, which would give the planning commission the ability to impose conditions as part of the final site plan approval. So it's not just approve this, and he's off and running. There would be a need to develop a site plan and come in for a special use permit. As you all know, the rezoning process is a two-step process. The planning commission, after holding a public hearing, makes a recommendation to the city council to either approve or deny the proposed rezoning application. Subsequently, the city council, after holding another public hearing, makes the decision to either approve or deny the proposed rezoning application. Rezoning considerations, things that you look at when you're doing rezoning action. Is the proposed classification compatible with the surrounding land uses and zone district classifications? Is the proposed rezoning consistent with the city master plan? If not or if questionable, does the request represent an appropriate use of the land based on changes and/or other factors that have occurred subsequent to the adoption of the plan? Are existing public facilities and services capable of accommodating the land uses permitted by the proposed classification? Is the proposed classification equal to or more appropriate than the existing zone district classification? And does the request meet the criteria required by the zoning ordinance for the intended use? Not to go through each of those in length of time, I've added answers to all those questions. In your staff report, they've been in the affirmative that they do meet those conditions, at least by my interpretation. Staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of this rezoning request to change the zoning from for parcel number 10-106-00503 from RM1 to conditional rezoning to B3 with the limitation of use for self-storage. And my recommended proposed motion, if you choose to wish to vote in the affirmative to make a recommendation for approval. And with that, that's the end of my presentation, and the applicant is here to fill in some gaps if I have missed anything.
Thank you, John. Robert, would you mind coming forward?
Rob Munger, I really don't have anything more to add. I think it covered everything, and the pictures were great and demonstrated what the situation is. Is there any questions on me?
That's a great idea.
Okay.
Great spot for it.
It is.
Out of the way and not seen. Will it be fenced, actually, before I open the public hearing? Because you mentioned business hours, so I just wondered if it's...
Business hours. I can be flexible on business hours, and then the other, it would be screened. It would have to have fencing plus natural screening, so like a pine tree or evergreen around, so it, there was a buffer, because it's been, you know, somebody's view for a long time, vacant property, and so I want to respect the neighbors.
So when I say fence, the entire facility, so your business hours, no one could enter?
Correct. They can't enter. And we lock, my location at 207 East River, we lock that up at 9:00 p.m., and then if somebody needs something after hours, they can call the site manager and they can get in, but that's pretty rare.
What's your access to this? Access to the storage units?
Right down that private road, right by the apartments.
Okay.
Everybody else good? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, again, for the storage facility here that has been presented to y'all. Anyone has any input, good or bad, please come forward, state your name for us, and write down, I think they have paper there for an address.
My name is Mary Lou Shively. The storage units would butt right up against my property or my housing at Pheasant Ridge. I guess my concern would be noise, lighting. Mr. Munger has addressed the time, 9:00 at night. Pheasant Ridge is full of a lot of older folks who go to bed at 7:00 at night, so if it's open till 9:00, don't know how much it's going to, you know, involve. The roadway that would go into there, that's next to the apartments, has a lot of children out there, a lot of the time, and you know what's going to happen if there's a lot of traffic? I think we're concerned more about the light, the noise in this area that's usually very, very quiet.
I think, is that about it, ladies?
The road, too.
Well, the road. There's a lot of mothers that are on that road when the schools get out, and their little kids. A lot of the parents are out there, but...
Pearl Street itself is in such disrepair.
And the road is in a lot of disrepair, whether or not that's going to be fixed at all. Just, you know, it's been a nice, quiet area to live in since I've been there, and it's kind of a little concerning at this point. And we wonder how much it's going to change some of our property values, having a commercial business right next to our homes.
Mary Lou, for you, Leah, what is the distance from your property to where this is going to be built? What are you talking?
I'm not, I'm not good with lengths, but you know, it's at the end of my modular home. I have a shed, and then it goes back, and that's where the fence is. Just probably where Carol's is, is where that road sort of ends. So it's quite close. I don't know, probably from there to there, out to there.
Okay. Because by the pictures, nothing looked like it was approaching anything, but the pictures that were presented tonight is all. So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening.
Brad Marine, I just had a couple of questions. I was looking at the master plan, and I noticed it was a 2015, even though it was updated in, what, '21? But it might be something to take a look at, because if, what he is saying, if properties have changed, you know, so, because I guess I'm thinking that the master plan is there for a reason. And in that RM1, I mean, it kind of lays out your, in your plan objectives and the housing and neighborhood plan objectives, that's why you have RM1. And so I, when he talked about the, you know, yeah, there's a change, but it's all right, I guess, in a nutshell, I didn't hear any explanation as to why, or the justification for changing this. Is it just because you want to take advantage of this property and put in something useful? And that's subjective, as far as useful. So I just didn't understand how this actually fit into the master plan, because it seemed 180-degree difference. The other concern I would have, you know, when you talk about a short-term rental or a storage like that, and you see them on the side of the highways when you're going down the road, you know, what do you get? You got a building with a fence around it. What does that really add to the tax revenue for Cadillac, if you're going to look at trying to propose some more housing for Cadillac? So how does that impact the residents? And if I had a house next door, that would be my concern, because you're going to put a fence up, you're going to put some trees there. To me, it just doesn't seem like a good fit, and it doesn't seem to follow the master plan, which is there for a reason.
Understood.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Penny Stang, and I have only one question. In changing this and having this whole project come to fruition, what does that benefit the city of Cadillac financially?
Can staff answer that?
Well, we don't tend to look at these things in terms of monetary return. We look at it in terms of land use policy and things that are reasonable from a land use policy perspective. I mean, without knowing an exact amount, obviously, if there were buildings placed on this lot of any sort, a matter if it were residential or self-storage, there's a value to those buildings, and the tax base that came off the value of those buildings would benefit the city. But that's not the motivation for why we do what we do.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this particular issue, and we can discuss this. Yes?
Rob, would you mind addressing the lighting issue?
Yeah, that was a great question.
That's a good question.
Great question. Light pollution is a critical thing. Over at my M55 location, we use solar lighting, pointing down. You will see some of the commercial applications, and I agree with this Brad back here, you'll see, like, streetlights, and then the light pollution goes into people's houses. So what I would do is I'd have my engineer do a light study for you, which I'm sure you guys have seen before, and we'd have to do a light study so that it's not becoming a problem for the neighbors. And then we can put the lights on motion control, so at night, so at my M55 location, we have motion control, so it's, they're not on all the time, and they're not, you know, blaring into somebody's house or their bedroom. So, so it...
In theory, after 9:00, unless it's an animal or somebody breaking in, the lights really won't...
It should be off.
Couldn't be on.
Yep, yeah. Because there's no use for it.
Right, right.
And then both sites, I have security, electronic security cameras and stuff, so somebody comes on, now they're so, you can actually see people at night, at the night.
Didn't you also suggest that ours are flexible?
Correct, correct. Yeah. You know, I want to be respectful to the neighbors. We've had, at my River Street location, we've asked people that have come in or scheduled, like, large U-Hauls, like the 30-foot U-Haul, it's basically a semi, and we ask them to come in the morning, not at, because we had a couple come at, like, 7:00, and they were unloading for four hours, and it just, it's not pleasant for the community. So, you know, we can't prevent that all the time, but we try to do, you know, our best.
Good. Any other questions for Rob yet?
Thank you.
We're good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Personally, we own storage units also. I've been up there lots. It's not noisy. People are getting things either in or out, and they leave. Just my two cents to that. Noise has never been an issue at our facilities. But where ours is, people have 24/7 access. So, Rob, it has set hours, and that's a good thing. So, just my two cents on ours isn't noisy, is all. And I understand your concerns, ladies.
Also, by making a special use permit, we'll have the ability to regulate what goes there, and if you're worried about a barrier with the landscape, that can be a condition, but this is just to rezone it, and the special use permit comes.
Correct. We're having problems hearing you.
She can't hear? I'm sorry. Did you hear any of it?
There.
Okay. What I was saying was that this is rezoning, it's not the special use permit. And then when Mr. Munger decides to build it and come to us with a special use permit, we do have the ability to set up some conditions of that building, including the concern about landscaping and it not being pretty to look at, so.
Or even if you're concerned with lighting, he could have summer and winter hours, because obviously, it's not even dark summer till tennis, so his lights wouldn't even be on. Obviously, then in the winter, you're looking at 5:00, and, okay, lights could be on. So he could have winter, summer hours as part of our special land use permit, if that also was part of this puzzle, to accommodate. So again, you don't have car lights. Car lights would probably be the biggest thing coming into maybe the facility at night, not knowing... How many units was this? I didn't even ask. I'm sorry, Rob.
I haven't even put a...
Oh, nothing to it. Okay, so we're just talking rezoning. We're getting the cart ahead of the horse. I'll slow that down. Sorry. Okay.
I can see it as a useful thing, you know, with all the apartments around there. I know how much storage is normally in an apartment.
Yep.
And I think it'd be pretty nice to have something close by. And there's quite a shortage of storage units in this town.
That's why they keep popping up.
Yeah. To me, it seems like a pretty good use of the land. I can't see what else you're going to do with it.
Not much.
It's kind of a landlocked...
It is landlocked.
Parcel, with no utilities.
No utilities.
Zero.
No electric.
To me, it seems like a good use of the land, although I understand it's tough to have things put in your backyard that weren't there before.
Yep. Agreed.
I lived out there, too, a little farther out, and they put a highway in our yard.
Yes, they did. Yes, ma'am, I don't normally do this, but sure. Mary Lou?
Coming to these meetings, too.
Oh, great. Welcome to have you.
I just want to let you know that at Pheasant Ridge, we all have our own sheds in the back, so...
Everyone?
Everyone has a shed, yes.
Sweet, well, they won't be...
Property taxes on those sheds, too. It's not part of our rent or anything. We pay property taxes on those. So, you know, I could see where maybe some of the apartments might need it, but in most cases, I would say in Pheasant Ridge, we don't need that kind of storage.
You will not be his customer.
We are.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for the question. Even if somebody were to build there, they can't. They don't have access.
Right, that right.
So, and it is way off the beaten path. I can see now maybe where you live based on this picture that he had with the red square, but...
Do you want me to call that up?
Yeah, just...
That one.
That one. Yeah, I'm just trying to get a feel for where that is slash, obviously, where they live.
I'm right there on the corner.
Okay. It's a fair distance-ish, okay?
No man's land.
Pretty much. And even the traffic thing, our storage, we have 72 storage units. There's some days we may not get anyone in the facility. So as far, granted, not just Pearl Street needs attention this year, but I don't think this added traffic, because I don't see it. I don't think this added traffic, that, that, because I don't see it happening. And hopefully we get some roads fixed this year. But, um, this proposed storage site, I don't think it's gonna beat that road up any worse than it already is, is all.
I don't see that either.
As far as kids that play and whatnot, um, God, I hope most people pay attention and not endanger that. Most of us are good adult drivers, I hope, okay? But understand all these concerns.
Well, I think it's pretty good use of the land, so I'm gonna make a motion that we move forward and approve this.
Just to rezone.
Just, just to rezone.
Yep, correct. Verbages per staff plan, yes? You want?
Yeah, I can't be like Joe.
I know, I know. Uh, do I have a second then?
Second.
Mr. Van Pelt. Danielle, please.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Bauman. Bunce.
Yes.
Post.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
Basher. Fent.
Motion passed. Thank you, Danielle.
Oh, hey Danielle, can I chime in?
Absolutely.
Hey, City Attorney Laura Genovich here. Just to clarify, that is to recommend the rezoning up to City Council. So it's not a final approval of the rezoning. City Council does still have to vote on it.
Hundred percent agreed, Laura. Yes.
Yeah, just wanted to make that clear for anyone in the public who might not be familiar with the process.
Perfect. And thank you, as always.
The eavesdropper.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can wait for the next part if you like, or you, you may leave if you like. I, I'll pause if you wanna leave. But if you wanna stay, you're more than welcome to stay.
Monday night entertainment.
Oh, perfect. God, I'm glad we can provide that.
No dancing.
My wife doesn't always think so, but anyways. Okay. Moving along, we have another application filed by Mr. Rob Munger, owner of the property. Requesting properties, there's a boatload of numbers here that staff will maybe address, addressed. Anyway, to be rezoned from RM two to B one. Having read this, Mr. Wallace has already got stuff on screen. Thank you.
Uh, yes, this application is for rezoning for the addresses two oh one through two twenty-one. Essentially, it's the vacant commercial building that's off the end of the Family Fair Shopping Plaza and three adjoining lots that are vacant, which are to the west of the commercial building that you see here. Uh, this gives you a little bit better idea of what the surrounding uses are. To the north, you have the Family Fair Plaza. To the northwest, you have the Marina Shore condominiums. To the west, you have the Harborview Apartments. To the, to the east, you have the vacant former Rite Aid building. There has been some strong interest shown in converting that into a daycare center. There have been some potential issues with that around, centering around private covenants that were imposed on that property. So we don't really know exactly what will be going into that building. And then, of course, you have single fa- ha- single-family homes located to the south of the site. The two oh one South Street, which is the property which has the commercial building, has been vacant for about twenty years. There are three adjacent vacant lots, uh, which as far as we know, have not had prior development, but we don't have precise information on that. The owner is applying to have the property rezoned from RM two, which is a multifamily designation, which allows for apartments, uh, to the B one auxiliary business district, which allows for a range of uses primarily intended for low-intensity commercial uses, but would allow for other uses as well. Getting into the narrative for the applicant, the proposed use of the property would be for low-intensity commercial use or residential use. Depending on the development of the Rite Aid building located at South Mitchell Street and South Street. The property has been vacant for over seventeen years and zoning hasn't been updated to be consistent with the surrounding businesses and current use that have developed over that timeframe. Going through what's there now and, and what's surrounding it, I have some photos to show you. This is of the vacant commercial building, which has been vacant for seventeen, twenty years, whatever that number exactly is. We don't know exactly. The Family Fair Plaza is located to the north of the site. Here's the view from the subject property. You can see that it's just looking at the end of the Shopping Plaza commercial buildings. Located to the east is the former Rite Aid building. And you can see that building with its former drive-through facility that was located there. Looking to the west, a little bit northwest, you have the Marina Shores condominiums. And then more directly west or just southwest, you have the high-rise Harborview Apartment Building located nearby. And those pictures are taken from the subject site, so it gives you an idea what the view is actually from that site. Uh, to the south, you have residential, single-family residential development. To my knowledge, I don't know if any of those houses have more than one unit, but they appear to be single-family homes. And these are the photos of, of the, the homes that are right adjacent to the property. Looking at the current zoning, you have a mix of zoning uses. You have, uh, you have B one, you have B three, uh, you have RM one, and you have RM two. So there's a, a range of zoning districts in this. It's not homogeneous in terms of its zoning. And of course, the subject site right now is the RM two designation, which is for multifamily. In terms of the subject site, in terms of what the master plan says, it's for medium-density residential intended primarily for single-family development. However, some variety of housing types, densities, styles, and consumer preferences are appropriate. Listed under the Housing and Neighborhood Plan objectives, you have to maintain the current range of single-family residential districts, to accommodate varying site densities, housing types, styles, and consumer preferences. And to provide opportunity for single-family housing to be integrated into mixed-use developments. So it did anticipate possibly mixing commercial and residential uses on the property. The zoning analysis, the property is proposed for low-intensity commercial use or residential use depending on the redevelopment of the Rite Aid building. The commercial building has been vacant for seventeen years and the zoning hasn't been updated to be consistent with the surrounding businesses and current uses that have developed over time. The applicant is seeking a B one zoning district. There is another B one district to the northwest of the site, and that's where the Marina Shores condominiums are. So even though it had a predominantly commercial label, it was developed in a, in a residential manner. There is the B three zoning districts to the north and east of the proposed site. And then finally, the B one district would be more appropriate than the B three district due to it having a lower intensity commercial uses. The B three has a much broader range of uses and some of those uses tend to have a more intensive use, such as automobile servicing and, and things of that nature. So the B one, if you're picking out of those districts, would seem to be less impact on the adjoining residential development. Under the B one zoning, the entire site could be used for commercial purposes. Residential uses would be permitted if they were located on upper floors. Residential uses may be considered if they were applied for, uh, under the special use permit process and that would be under the residential planned unit development review process. Rezoning into the B one district gives the widest latitude of uses that would still be compatible with the surrounding land uses, including the residential homes to the south. Especially, uh, given the, the types of uses that could be there if you gave it a more intense zoning district classification. Again, just highlighting the fact that this is a two-step process. The Planning Commission reviews it, makes a recommendation to council, and ultimately, the council has a public hearing and makes a decision on the rezoning. Rezoning considerations, again, I walked through these on the previous one, the questions you ask, you know, about compatibility with surrounding land use, consistency with master plan. Are there available and adequate public facilities? The proposed classification, is it equal to or more appropriate than the existing zone district? And does it meet the criteria required by the zoning ordinance for the intended use? Again, I think I've answered those questions in the affirmative. Details are in your staff report. And the staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommends to the City Council approval of the rezoning request. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Uh, before I open public hearing, Rob, uh, you have input on this one? You're the popular guy tonight.
Yeah. Really, I don't have anything to add to the report very thorough. Just the area's changed since it's been vacant for so long. And at this point, I don't have a tenant, I don't have a end user in mind, but I wanted to get the zoning in a more appropriate so that there were options because I've been told that there was a, a septic offer on the Rite Aid or in process from a couple of people, so I thought it was just being proactive.
So you don't have a big plan yet that everybody, so you're just trying to get parts of the puzzle in place?
Exactly. It was one of these projects, I've looked at, if you look at what I've done in Cadillac, I've taken on a lot of projects that were dead. Mitch Cobb Building, sat there for ten-plus years. And there was no, if you talk about taxes, there was no taxes really getting collected for ten years. Plus MDOT, so there's, now I pay, I think, around fourteen thousand dollars a year for that building. Better Bodies, same thing. I got on a tax, so I saw that, said, hey, let's, let's do something with it. Now that's on a tax rolls, it's paying a lot of property taxes. Two oh seven East River, um, there's fourteen thousand dollars I'm paying there. Couple office buildings up that I redid right next to the new subway. The two that were redwood and now they're a tan, or off-white, you know, once again. So I've been taking like projects and seeing, um, what I can do to improve the community. And I kept driving by this building and I, I'm like, this is, it's great location. But nothing was getting done with it, so I just, um, you know, some people go off, I, I buy buildings. So, um, I bought it. And, you know, there's no debt on it, I can sit on it. But I think it's a, a great location to get developed out and, and fill in that area of the community versus just being a eyesore.
Is there something being done with that building right now, that one?
I, I had it totally gutted.
Go to YouTube and watch his video.
Yep, yeah, it's on, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
I worked with the, um, IST students that came and videotaped it. And so, um, we're gonna do the after, so it was, it was pretty disgusting in there. And so everything, actually Troy Baxter and the Most Program demoed everything on the inside. And now it looks, I mean, it looks like a normal building on the inside. The structure is in really good shape, but it was pretty, pretty nasty.
I remember being in there as a kid. Friends lived there when it was Haynes Photo Studio. It was quite a nice place at that time.
Yeah, well, I want to bring it back up. I think with the design of it, I do envision it. If you look at it, there's a lot of, um, modern design techniques that are getting built right now with that same, uh, footprint and design. And so I think I can, um, like what I did with Better Bodies and what I did with these two office buildings up, I think I can really convert that and make it a really cool showpiece. So that, that's my desire.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you, Rob. At this time, I will open public hearing. Again, please come forward, state your name, write address on paper and try and limit your conversations a bit. So at this time, public hearing is open for this rezoning project on South Street. Good evening, Laura.
Hi. Lori King. Let me just put my name down and then I'll talk. Um, I live at six oh four Holly Road, so I'm relatively close to this project. But I also own property that abuts it, one of the single-family homes. I bought that property to use as single-family because this parcel is zoned for residential. So I am very concerned about switching this to a commercial use, part particularly because our master plan calls for the use that it has right now. It calls for residential, multifamily is ideal there. I think it's incredibly premature to rezone this property when there's no use, particularly in light of what Mr. Munger mentioned, that the Rite Aid project may be developed into, um, a, how was, or daycare. I think having housing in that vicinity is appropriate. I also think it's a beautiful, housing is a great use for that property. And contrary to what you heard, there actually was interest in this property several years ago. Prior owner from Mr. Munger, who for whatever reason wanted to sit for a while and try to get higher prices, but twice approached by a multifamily developer who would have used that property. The deal eventually fell apart and that prior owner died, which is part of the reason it's been sitting there vacant. So the fact that it's been vacant so long, I don't think is a reason to suggest that we need to change to commercial zoning at this point. I'm also very concerned that, that the use being, or excuse me, the rezoning being proposed includes things like short-term rentals. I, I don't want a bunch of people short-term rentals there. And in my understanding of what we have as a community, given instructions, it is to make short-term rentals in other areas, not really close to the single-family residential, which we would be right on top of it then. So I, I object. I think that it's premature to rezone this property. If Mr. Munger has a plan of what he's proposing to use, kind of like he does on the Pearl Street, then it's a little bit easier to evaluate whether it makes sense to do a rezoning, but I don't think it makes sense at this time. Thanks.
Thank you.
I gotta get my steps in, so that's why I'm up and down here. Brad Marine. I think it's really cool that you're getting the CTC students involved. I mean, that, that's pretty neat. But I share the same concern and I keep going back to the master plan. You got a master plan for a reason. And, and it talks about the need and there's, there's a need for a reason. When you look at that property, it's an ideal location for residential. It's, you, you're within walking distance to the park, you're walking distance to the lake. I mean, it's a great spot. If you make it commercial, now you potentially take that away. And that's actually, like I said, it, it's a beautiful spot. And, and I know, um, what Ms. King was talking about in terms of the gentleman that owned that and, and had some ideas on how to, to develop it. I just hate to see you keep walking away from the master plan. You just, it, why have one? If we're just gonna spot check and, and come in and say, well, let's take that piece and do this, let's take that piece. let's take that piece and do this. Do it again. If it's out of date, by goodness gracious, do it again. Get input from the community. Look at Clam Lake's master plan. They do a great job. They actually do a community survey, and they ask the community, what do you want? Where do you want to see it? Where do you want to see us focus our energy? What do you want to see us do? And that's what they use as a guide in their decision-making. And that's why they, and I was there, that's why they bailed out of the Cadillac trying to hook up to Earl's Water. Because the residents in Clam Lake don't want that. And it was clearly stated in their master plan. So by all means, I respectfully ask that you do follow it, and if it needs updated, before you start making a lot of spot changes, update it and get input from the community. Simple survey, you can get a lot of feedback. Thank you.
Evening, Mr. King.
Good evening. Stephen King, six oh four Holly Road, also. I think it is so critical, especially for you as a board, to think about changing zoning before there's any plan for that change in zoning, when it's zoned perfectly and pursuant to the master plan. If it fits the master plan, it says that this is what our goal is, to have it residential, multifamily's perfect there. If you look at RM2, it talks about the buffer from the business district that's there. We have Harborview with senior residents who cross that property all the time to get to Family Fair, and the businesses are there. If you put a higher-density commercial along there, you're putting those pedestrians at risk. The B1 designation requires that businesses have to be on the bottom, and any residential has to be on top. There's not enough space there for parking to do commercial plus residential. I think if you're looking at the Rite Aid becoming daycare, which I think is wonderful, you want families who are coming here to work to be able to have residential there to take advantage of that. B1 is not a fit for the master plan. B1 is not a fit for the buffer from Harborview or the condos or the end of Holly Road residential. And then now, as Lori King stated, we own a home on Cottage Street, which is a single-family residential. There's been great investment by several people on Cottage Street. It used to be fairly run down, it's very nice. We don't want our homes backing up on commercial, we want it to continue to be residential. So in this case, where there's no plan to be considered, where it fits the master plan right now, I don't think it's appropriate to make a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King.
This is just for zoning?
Just for zoning. We have no plan.
Jeez. Frickin' holes in the thing.
Let me spell that for you.
There's holes in the, the screw heads got these star, and never mind.
Rick Torres, I live on 113 Otsego Place here in Cadillac. Lived here in Cadillac for quite some time. I agree with the contention that if there's a master plan, that's why we draw a master plan. It's there for a reason, okay? And we have seen, over the past few years, changes with much disdain from the residents of the city of Cadillac. And frankly, I'm a little perturbed with Mr. Wallace that when people come to him with an idea, a property that they've purchased and now own, let's change it so that I can do something like this. And at this point, we don't even know what that is. It's up in the air yet. Give me the change, and then, then I'll tell you, right? Doesn't work like that. We have a master plan for a reason, all right? We've seen the thing with the RM1s and the RM2s and the, I get so confused about it, but changing entire areas so that there can be bed and breakfasts. There's still an issue with the STR, a short-term rental here in town on 128 Pine Street, and the hearing has been set back to April now. We gotta stop this. These changes to our master plan, the way these things are set are for a reason, because we need those areas to be as they are defined. Leave them as they are defined. Now, if the people come here and they start asking you, wow, could we change it for this? This would really help our community. Then it's time for our planning commission to listen to your community. The residents who live here, the people that have a vested interest in this town. Leave the master plans alone. Thank you.
Thank you. I knew you'd come up.
I didn't think I was gonna say anything.
You saw him.
I tried to take the day off.
I know. We always appreciate it.
I guess what I look at is another spot zoning thing, so I fully expect you guys to pass it. Like the one out on Sunnyside behind the gas station, right by your house. And then, like, changing the wording on the one on Cass Street, effectively spot-zoned the bed and breakfast thing, and the one that you spot-zoned, over-approved spot zoning on Pine Street. So I would expect this to be approved by you. I don't like spot zoning, all right? That's what I think. So I think that, I've heard all kinds of different ideas. What the property's gonna be used for was multifamily. I thought, well, that sounds okay, that sounds, what's an appropriate use, and I don't see anything around it that's B1. The Lake Street stuff is B1, and that's forty-five units on a post-stamp-sized lot. So I think, I had heard that they were gonna tear the place out and then have some, have the architects lay out plans for apartments there, but, you know, you hear stuff, right? So, but I also have seen renderings that John Wallace provided the previous owner of apartment houses or duplexes or fourplexes or something like that. I thought, well, that's an excellent use for that property. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Andy. And that would require no change? Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Input? Good, that was Andy.
Ruth Ann French. One nineteen Marble Street's kind of in my neighborhood, and ironically enough, I agree with most of the people that have spoken tonight. I don't see this as spot zoning if you were to change it. However, I do think it's a good idea to stick with your master plan. I, it is such a residential area that could benefit from the commercial areas around it, like the Family Fair Plaza and all of that. It's within walking distance. It's, I like a walkable community, which is what we try to pride ourselves on. And by putting, keeping that as a residential corner there, it would allow for walkability for multi-apartment use. However, I would prefer to see that area developed as a residential area and not concentrate the business any more than it already is. There's a lot of people coming in and out of the parking area. Like Steve said, there's a lot of pedestrians that walk back and forth to Harbor View. It's already a congested corner on Lake Street, and I would be cautious about bringing any more commercial business to that very concentrated area already. Thank you.
Congratulations on your council appointment, Ruth Ann. Anyone else have any input? Seeing no one else, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time. We thank you for all your input. Well, people have spoken.
Well, what I'm looking at here, page eight here, where it talks about, is the proposed classification compatible with surrounding land uses and zone district classifications? And the last paragraph in that explanation, it also allows for residential on upper levels of, by right, and would allow for full residential use, if approved, for an RPUD as a special use in a B1 district. So there still needs to be an application for what's to be used for that. We don't know that.
We do not. It's really not a lot different than the one that we did for Mr. Baxter, that we rezoned stuff and did not have a plan. This isn't a lot different, although this is in, with the residential behind it, but... Question, Mr. Wallace. If, if this were to become apartments, would it have to be rezoned to the B1 similar to Marina Shores?
If you wanted to build apartments on the site, it could stay in its current district, although if, it might require an RPUD, depending on how the development plan came together. If the setbacks were slightly short or something of that nature. So at some level, it could be built as multifamily under the current designation or an RPUD, which would require a special use permit. But, you know, doing the B1, I think you retain the option to go either direction, to either go commercially or residentially, because there would be nothing to preclude the applicant from filing an RPUD in a B1 district. Similarly, you know, we've seen that happen elsewhere where residential projects are proposed in non, you know, non-residential areas.
Thank you. Next question, what, when, when are we going to revisit the master plan?
Well...
Update?
It will begin following the finalization of the zoning ordinance.
This year, question?
Right, well, probably in a week or two, have a proposal going out for RFP, for someone to complete the work on the zoning ordinance. It should probably take them somewhere between three to six months to complete that, given a series of public input processes and so forth. We've attempted to move forward on the master plan, but we're able to get funds to do that from the state, but they won't do it until the zoning ordinance is complete.
And I'm sure the information that we've been given, I mean, Lori and/or Steve wouldn't do their, not do their homework, so I'm figuring this, or Mr. Marine, that the master plan is stating that this isn't a spot for this, yes?
Well, if you read in my staff report, I could find it again and read it, it doesn't limit itself to, it talks about multifamily, it talks about single-family, it talks about mixed-use development. That is a combination of commercial and residential. That's what the master plan says. So it's not exclusive to multifamily, it's not exclusive to single-family. It allows for any of that, and you have the ability to do RPUD, which would be complete residential regardless of the zoning district. But given that there's a commercial building on the site, you know, you have, you have that as a, if it were all vacant land, it might be slightly different, but, you know, that has to be taken into account as well. I need to make a comment.
I know you do. While I'm looking at you.
Rick, I, I disagree with you being perturbed with John. John's job is to entertain these things. It's his job to facilitate things like this within our community. Whether they're right or wrong, it's his job to present it to us, and it's our job to decide if it fits. I haven't seen a master plan anywhere for anybody that isn't subject to change. And obviously, this gets changed a lot. You know, I agree with you that it needs to be updated, should have been done, would have been done. It hasn't. We need to live in today, we need to move forward here. We've gotta make decisions on these things, because that guy can't wait forever. Whether it's right or wrong, you may, we've gotta ultimately decide together. But John does an incredible amount of work to make this information available to us, and, I mean, I gotta say, he does a pretty darn good job of it.
Can I, can I respond to you?
That's up to John.
At public comment, I will, you can respond. So that's further down my line. Because you're familiar with my meetings, this young lady wasn't.
You know, and just for everybody's reference, the master plan is, I think, at least ten years old already, and hasn't had a serious revisit since that time. So you are allowed to move away from a master plan if you think conditions or market changes have happened in the time that you've done the master plan. Normally, the master plan should be updated within five years in most communities. So we're running a little behind on that, and it could very well be considered outdated.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So putting it into a B1 zone opens it up for more considerations of how the property is to be used. Is that correct? That's correct. I mean, it opens it up, well, if you look at the permitted uses under the B1, those could come in, not under special use permit, just under site plan review. So there would be protections in terms of what staff could recommend in terms of screening between the proposed uses and the residential or whatever. That could be handled through site plan review, but there would not be a public hearing on the commercial uses that are permitted by right in the B1 district. So you'd have to look at the B1, and that's why I believe the applicant picked the B1, because they were less objectionable uses than you would get in the B2 or the B3. They tended to be of a lighter nature, and more, probably more feasible to create a satisfactory buffer between the commercial uses and the residential uses, either through fencing, landscaping, and so forth. Well, John, this previously was a light commercial application on that corner. Was it rezoned at some point, or was that when the photo studio, and there was something else in there after that, was there a coffee shop? Somebody put in a drive-through window there? I'm not aware of the timing between, well, since I've been here, it's been, I think it's been vacant since I've been here, so I have no knowledge of when it was. It hasn't changed? So I don't know if, how it became commercial with the R2, or whether the R2 zoning came after, after it was already being used commercially. Whether they overlaid that R2 on a commercial use and just made it a non-conforming use, it's entirely possible. Okay.
I think Louis Richardson lived in it for a while. Never was a bank.
But somebody put in a drive-through?
There was a, yeah.
Window, for some reason, and I remember it, but I don't remember what was there.
What's interesting is it operated as a business and residential.
Yeah.
Which is not uncommon. Nope. That was his house.
That is also, it's a, it is a perfect property for apartments, and I, I hate to see it go away from that use, I mean, it's.
But even the owner doesn't know what he's doing with it yet, so.
I know.
Here, here's where we are, and they're trying to get that. In front of that cardigan or bag, sorry.
If they filed for R P U D, they could still do apartments in the B one.
I'm sorry, John, Mr. Wallace keeps piping in, and I don't mean to be out of order, but he's, he's talking around the ordinance. This property was bought knowing what the zoning was, which is R M two. That does fit the master plan, it is in a neighborhood. So, Mr. Wallace, I understand, you say it could be B one, we don't know what would be put in with B one. Now is not the time to change the zoning. If Mr. Mungar wants to come back later and have us reconsider a project that would require rezoning, that would be appropriate. Otherwise, he bought it knowing it was R M two.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay, well. God, I'm glad I volunteered for this.
Okay.
There's something to be said for it.
Yeah, and, and, and.
We're just leaving it.
And I agree.
There's some kind of plan.
Yeah.
Correct.
You need a motion, John?
Yep.
I make a motion that we leave it, R M two, until we have a more firm plan. I, I don't think we have enough information to make any changes at this point.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Support. Roll, please.
Foster, Bunce.
Yes.
Fent, Putvin.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Post.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Thank you, Danielle. We're at new business, we have a fee schedule. I looked at that. Your entertainment is not done, ladies. Are you doing this one, Mr. Wallace, also?
I can. Yeah, we're, we're just supplying you with the fee schedule for information. Over the course of the last few years, we've been tracking prices in other communities, probably at least ten or twelve other communities that are similar to Cadillac. And we've been noticing that our fee schedule, our fees for our development plans are rather low and aren't even covering anywhere close to the costs that we incur to review the projects, whether that be publication. We've hit publication costs now that run close to, you know, two hundred dollars per, per public hearing. And with that two hundred dollars, that doesn't include any of the staff time to review the plans and so forth, so we thought the, the fees were totally out of sync with what's going on elsewhere in the state. And are recommending changes to bring it a little more in line, and even saying it'll be a little more in line, it still will not cover our costs to undertake the review process on these plans, but it would get it closer and, and we feel more appropriate.
Yeah, I looked at what some of these places charge and said, holy smokes.
Yeah.
Like, wow. But, and so I agree with your statement, yeah, some of this is really reasonable. So this is just for information, or you gotta have a motion on proposed rates, or?
Well, if you wanted to make a motion in support, it's not required. Eventually, we would end up forwarding this to council, and council would be making the decision on this, but it's up to you whether you just want to accept it as information, or, or if you feel like you're in a position to make a motion of support, that would be fine, too.
Board, what do you think?
I think we're still a little on the low side. Yeah.
Yeah.
From the looks of things, yeah.
And it still keeps some.
Pretty reasonable.
Pretty reasonable, I, I was comparing us, well, looking at a lot of things Claire did and whatnot, although Claire is a bit smaller than us, of course, but. Some of these places were like, oh, my.
Yeah, well, you gotta look at.
So, yeah. So.
I'd say it's a good start for the initial change.
I agree.
You know, and these are, these are all things that can be changed, you know, on some periodic basis, whether it be annual, every two years, whatever people feel is appropriate, but it had been a considerably long time before fees were increased at any level.
Take it for what it is.
Need to make a motion or just say we're good with it?
I'm good, I'm good with it, yeah.
We're all good with it.
All right.
Thank you.
Very interesting. Yeah, it is.
It was. Having no old business, board member comments, any? Spring break for a lot of them.
Yeah.
It wasn't very springy last night or today, but.
No. But that's March.
There you go.
That's what we live with.
Any other communications, Danielle and or Mr. Wallace?
None other than that were, would have been in your pack.
Okay, perfect. Drum roll for Mr. Rick Torres, public comments, please come forwards. Thanks, Andy.
You got one.
Oh, I don't need that. Perhaps my words confused you. All right, I still stand by, I still stand by what I said, I know his job is not an easy job. I also think that his job, not just being in Cadillac, but also in another community, tends to mix things up, but historically speaking, what we've seen happening with the zoning in this town, and the spot zoning that's occurred, and the change in zoning in this town, that's the only reason why I feel the way I feel about Mr. Wallace. That is the only reason why I feel that way. Yeah, could anyone else do that job? Yeah, I think so. Could anyone else do it better than John Wallace? I believe so, yes. Once again, it's about what the citizens of your town, of what your, your community, the residents that pay taxes here, that live here, and play here, and work here, and study here. It's what they want, and that's who you gotta listen to. He may have some great ideas for certain investments in this town, and some may be beneficial and, and justifiable, and good, but if your community speaks up, contrarily to what he's proposing, or anyone else for that matter, that's why you're there, to serve us. That's why he's there, to serve us, not just me, all of us. We come to these meetings, I've been coming to it for over three years now. We come here disheartened. We know you're gonna say yes. Our city council's gonna pass it despite what the community says. We had a man get on his knees once and ask him not to zone a specific way. Didn't do him any good. We had some senior citizen ladies stand up and beg the council not to pass an increase. They still did, in the water. Now we're in a real water situation. The biggest water situation in this town is yet to be discovered, I think, because we're all ignoring it. And it's our beautiful lake, the heartbeat of our community. I don't know if any zoning can help that, but I got news for you. All of the fertilization that's going on around this town, along this lake, we're gonna lose our lake. You lose our lake, you're gonna lose your community, you're gonna lose your town. That's its heartbeat. I'm telling you as a planning commission, because I took thousands of kids out there every year fishing, hiking, learning all about our beautiful natural resources. And I tell you what, you got a lot of big fish to fry here, and we need to start listening to the people. If you don't listen to them, things are gonna go the wrong way, you're gonna have upheaval. You're gonna have people that aren't happy. People want to be happy, they want to enjoy their lives in our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other business, none. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. King.
Get it quicker, I'm getting older, I'm not quite as.
You jumped up so fast.
My, my step.
My apologies, sir.
No, no worries. I wanted to thank the board for listening tonight, that, that's what you are here for, for us, is to listen, and I appreciate that. One of the things I'd like to remind the board is that you're kind of the gatekeeper before anything gets to council. And zoning is important, zoning says people can buy with confidence that things around them won't change, and, and that's to my one point, Mr. Rice, I agree, in life, there's change. But when people buy in a neighborhood, when they buy in specific neighborhoods, they actually buy not to have change. They buy to have the security to know that it won't change. And what's happened, and I'm, I'm not saying with you guys, but I'm saying in general, is we've had a lot of people buying property, 128 Pine Street, this property, knowing what the zoning is, and saying, as long as we get a staff approval, it'll get rubber stamped. And I think we want to be careful of that, because when I buy and I know what the zoning is, then I have to live with that zoning. If I have a good project, then yes, I'm gonna come to you, Mr. Rice, and say, I want you to consider, I think this will be good for the surrounding neighborhood, everybody, and make my pitch that way. But I can't buy and speculate when I knew what the zoning was to start with. And I want to change the character of the neighborhood, and I have neighbors saying, we don't want that change. So I really appreciate you guys listening and thinking that I, and I would like Mr. Wallace to think, because I do have a problem when you cater to certain things. Tonight, there were statements about the master plan, and about, I'll do whatever I want. The master plan, in the request, you twisted and did a word salad. That R M two zoning is exactly what was planned for that neighborhood, it's as simple as that. Don't throw P U D request at the board, don't throw word salad. The, the point is, it meets the master plan, the owner bought it knowing what the zoning is. That should be staff's comment to this board, to make a good decision. Thank you.
Y'all gotta get off the hook this easy, right?
I, I'm gonna ask any other public comment this time, because I was moving too fast.
You know, I retired, I never anticipated being here, but I'm glad Ms. French is here. You know, I keep going back to, and a lot, I think a lot of the challenges that we're facing is we have lost track of that foundational piece, i.e. the master plan. Now, Mr. Wallace made a statement that hasn't been updated in ten years, which is correct, but I think it was in 2021, it was passed as, as was, no amendments were gonna be made. So it's a six year, if you look at it, you'll see that, it's actually in, in your, on the website. So either six years ago or five years ago, the, the plan was fine, and now it's changed, but the way, again, the way he talks about it, that hasn't been changed since 2015. Well, there was a chance to change it, and it wasn't. And, and I agree with Mr. King, I'm looking at what he was saying regards to multifamily, and what's in the master plan, which I, it doesn't jive. It doesn't, it's not accurate. And I think that's where you have the opportunity, and I would say that same thing with the city council. When you're getting information, I think you want to do some probing. I think you want to do some homework and say, well, wait a minute. The public is saying one thing, John's saying another, what's going on here? Because there's inaccurate information, and, and we're at a disadvantage, because when, when we're, our session's closed, we can't say anything. And he can say whatever he wants, and we don't have a chance to respond. Thankfully, John, I appreciate you letting Mr. King and, and the young lady, like that, young lady, sitting here.
Stole my line.
Yeah. To have something to say, because he's not being, I don't, I guess I'll use it, he's not being truthful. And, and I find that scary, because it's the same thing that's happened to the city council. Things have been said or not said, and they take it as, that's it, that's the word, and look at the, look at the situation we're in. If you had an updated master plan, think how easy your job would be. And there's no excuse not to have one. You don't need to hire and spend thirty, forty thousand dollars for a firm to come up with a master plan. Ask Clam Lake, they probably did it for five thousand. And it's a hell of a plan, I encourage you to get on their website and take a look at it. So that's all I'm asking, same thing with, no matter where you're at in government, if you're here in this seat or your city council seat, you can't take verbatim what the staff are telling you as gospel. Because we've gotten complacent. And the fact that you don't have a master plan in the last ten years ought to tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marine. I thought you were taking the night off.
I'm here.
He is fired. I'm here already.
What was I gonna say? I can't believe it, good job, I mean, yay! Because every time I've been here, it's the truth, I have seen everything get passed, boom, 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 boom. So I think this was hopefully more than a moment of clarity, you know? But when we talk about the, the updating the zoning ordinance, right, well, we'll get that, when we get that. And, you know, I keep going back to that memo that John put out in October of twenty one, and the last line of that says, we're aiming to have the new zoning ordinance on the books within the first half of next year, so that's twenty two, okay? Somebody's not doing their job, and if they were, your jobs would be a lot easier. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Troy Baxter, and I live at 443 East Division Street. And I do remember an interested party in this site on South Street. About, about thirteen years ago, there was an offer from New Hope Shelter to buy that property. And if I'm not mistaken, this board, or whoever was on the board at that time, was in support of things moving forward. But the neighborhood along the lake really didn't want the homeless shelter there. And I wasn't on the board for New Hope then, I came in after that. But I agree with not having New Hope Shelter at that site. We managed to acquire some property out just the other side of the Sheriff's Department. And so now those individuals that are already down and out have to take the walk of shame from the shelter into the city for services, that's not all bad either. There's motivation to get things together, and so I'm, I'm gonna approve of all that. I would like also to reiterate that I believe that everyone that is here wants what is best for this city. I would like also to, to reiterate that uh I believe that everyone that is here wants what is best for this city. Because we live here and uh we've invested here, we've spent money here, we want it to be a good place. For other people that are wanting to move uh to this, to this community. So uh we're, we're all gonna have different opinions on how things should take, take place, but certainly uh we're not enemies. Uh but there is strength in diversity. And so we can uh have our favorite colors and our preferences and still uh agree to disagree. But one thing that uh I think we're together on is we want what is best for Cadillac. And to that, uh and I, I wanna thank uh this board for uh your service. And uh, and I spoke that to the council the last time I was here and there's several people uh. That uh have served for years on the council and uh just looking at uh a real positive outlook for this year for. Uh ministries that I'm involved in across the city, so uh, uh there is a scripture that says. Um be not weary in well-doing, for you will reap and do season if you faint not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Any other public comment, I gotta ask now.
I think you've covered the.
You're blindsided there, but. Not intentionally. So, if everybody, if everybody's good, we're out.